Mayor, we are live and recording, so.
Okay, great. I want to go ahead and call this meeting of the Fullerton City Council to order. Ms. City Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Mayor Fitzgerald?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Florrie?
She's muted, but she is here.
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Here.
Councilmember Zara?
Here.
Thank you. I've asked Councilmember Jesus Silva if he'll lead us in an invocation this evening.
Yes, please bow your heads. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, please watch over us in this time of crisis. Please give us the strength and perseverance to succeed. We trust that you will guide us and give us the wisdom to lead our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Councilmember Zara, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and I hope as we pledge allegiance to our lives, we find a new sense of unity in this time of crisis. Heart, for your hearts, follow me, please. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. Now's the time in our meeting where I ask the City Council members if they have any ex parte communications, which for those of you who are joining us for this virtual meeting just means have any of us talked privately to any member of a employee negotiating unit? Does anyone have any ex parte communications?
No.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and to City Council and staff communications, and I'll turn it over to our city manager and ask him to give us a report, an update on what the city is doing to address the coronavirus crisis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The department head team, as part of the disaster council, have been very busy. We meet every morning at 7:30 for our first briefing, and then we end the day at a 4 o'clock briefing. We also do that on the weekend, so as people know, we've been putting out onto social media. We have pretty much closed down City Hall, which is similar to what every other city has done in Orange County. We are still doing things by appointment through development services, and we are still doing building inspections, and of course, public safety, fire, and police are active and responding. At this time, you know, we are looking at more closures of different things at parks. The parks will be open themselves, the trails will be open. We are encouraging and putting up more signage for social distancing. But we are attempting to do is make sure that people can get outside, but practice social distancing, it's very important. At the stairs, we are making the Hillcrest stairs one way only. And so that sign is going up late this afternoon, so by tomorrow on the weekend, people will only be able to go up and down the stairs one specific way in order to make sure that people are not, you know, passing in front of each other and all that stuff, so. But we feel it's within the Governor's Executive Order and the Public Health Order to still allow the access to the trails and to the parks. Though we have closed down, as people will notice, the outdoor gyms and the playground equipment, so. Couple of other things that we're looking at. We do know that today, the Orange County Treasurer Tax Collector has announced that their office will be working with anybody who, for whatever reason, is late in their property tax payments coming up. That deadline is April 10th. And so, much like tonight's basis of the eviction moratorium, if somebody is struggling because of the COVID-19 issue, they can make an appeal to the tax collector and validate why they were late on their property tax payment. Amongst that, there's been, you know, things change by the hour and by the day. And so we are constantly monitoring that. By tomorrow, we will be having a hotline that will come into the city manager's office during non-normal hours that will be transferred over to the police department, so people can make questions and inquiries into that, so. If that, there's any specific questions, but I.
Do any of the members of council have questions? Mr. Silva?
I don't have any questions, but I do, I do want to thank you for calling this meeting and then putting us into action. And I do want to acknowledge the Inspection Department, the Code of Redevelopment Department. They came out to my house to sign up on my patio, and I've heard a couple of stories from my neighbors where they have been very helpful in coming out and doing the inspections while keeping their distance. So a great job to that department.
That's great. And Councilman Zara, did you have something to ask?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'll just go around to the council if you have anything related to coronavirus that you want to speak about right now. Councilman Zara, was there anything?
I want to say that, you know, just for the general public that's watching right now, and we will reiterate our message that we're all together in this together, and then we will find solutions. These are unprecedented times, and we, we will find a solution to all our, our issues, hopefully, and we're working collaboratively with, not just locally, with other cities and the county, but federally and the state. And I want to commend our staff and our city manager for his leadership as well in, in this. And, and everybody from our public safety, personnel also who are out there exposing themselves daily. And I want to thank our community for coming together and, and really rallying as a, as a, as a community united in facing this. So thank you for everything that everyone is doing.
That's great. And Councilman Silva, did you have some comments?
One, one last comment. I know that the state has been working for, I mean, just yesterday, there was a new executive order regarding mortgages and how the governor is working with some of the banks to work with the banks so that some of the residents or people who may not be able to pay their mortgages, they'll, the banks will work with them to give them time to pay when hopefully this is over. So just on that note, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on.
That's great. Thank you. Councilman Whitaker, did you have any comments? Okay, I know that he's muted right now, but I think I heard him say that he didn't have any. So we'll ask Mayor Protem Florrie if you have any comments.
Two. Can I?
Start again, go ahead.
Okay, I would like our city manager to talk about the DMV situation, because that impacts a lot of people, too.
Okay. I think we'll have him. Oh, Ken, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I do know that the state is closing some of their offices. We do know that the Fullerton DMV is closed until April 1st, I believe it is. And actually, beyond that, they are only taking appointments at this time. And it's, and with many situations, it's very fluid as to when they're going to allow people to start lining back up, so.
Ken?
Yes.
I just watched a news report that stated that all the DMV offices were closed until April 1st. Every single one of them. I think there's over 110 of them.
Okay, we can double check that and get that on our website, maybe, so.
Okay. All right. The, the reason is, is that an employee at the DMV office in Fullerton tested positive for coronavirus, and so they shut everything down as a result. So.
Mayor Protem, did you have any other comments at this time?
I do not.
Okay. I, before we get to our one regular business item, I just wanted to thank, as Councilman Zara did, our city staff for the great job that they are doing, our first responders, and all the healthcare workers who are in our community on the front lines every day in this unprecedented crisis. I have personally seen a lot of kindness and goodness in our community, and I, and I just want to thank everybody for that. Now is the time to come together and to help each other. And for those of you who have joined us for this special meeting tonight, I want to thank you. We've received some comments online that we're going to hear about. And this may not be the only virtual meeting that we have via video during this time, and so I hope you'll all bear with us as we kind of feel our way around this as well. I wanted to thank Councilmember Zara and Councilmember Silva, who specifically asked us to have this special meeting to discuss a moratorium on evictions during this time. We know that, I mean, all of us are struggling in different ways, but your home is the, just the foundation of what you need, and so we're glad to be able to be here tonight to deal with that issue. So Councilman Zara and Councilman Silva, thank you so much for asking us to do this. And with that, we'll go to our one regular business item that we do have. It's an urgency ordinance related to a temporary moratorium on evicting tenants due to the COVID-19 public health crisis. Mr. City Manager, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
I do have a very, very short presentation. This was requested. So in the Governor's Executive Order, he pretty much said that he did not want, you know, evictions to clear for residents or businesses that were impacted by the COVID-19. And so, but in that executive order, even though it lined out a lot of things, it did nothing, and it forced the city to actually pass ordinance. So that is why we're here tonight. Before you is an urgency ordinance related to a temporary moratorium on evicting residents or tenants, and that's residential and commercial, due to the COVID-19 public health crisis. And within the Governor's Executive Order, it outlines the eligibility and what goes on, and the city attorney can speak a little bit closer to that. But with that, I will turn it over to Scott Porter, who is here from the city attorney's office.
Scott, you're muted right now, so if you can unself. There we go. Why don't you start again?
There we go. I was saying that I thought that I was muted. So how about that? So, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions. The short version is, this allows the city the authority to prohibit commercial and residential evictions. The Governor's Order expressly says that we cannot prohibit the collection of rent. Rather, it would simply be a delay of the collection of rent. So the proposed ordinance is here before you, and I, I will say that I do have two recommended revisions that were not included in the version before you. They're two cleanup things that I think only attorneys care about. So the first recommended revision would be to Section 1A, which currently says term. I would recommend that we add, to clarify when the, the term of this would be, we would add the following sentence. This ordinance applies only to rent due on or after the issuance of the executive order N-28-20 on March 4th, 2020. So you're all aware, that was when the governor declared the state of emergency. The second recommended revision is within Section 1E of the ordinance. Instead of it referring to a three-day pay or quit notice, so we would strike those words out, and instead it would say, notice to pay rent or quit. And the reason for this revision is that nine times out of 10, there's a three-day rule, but in rare circumstances, there's a five-day notice period, so that would just fix that potential issue.
Okay, Mr. Porter, thank you very much for that clarification. Before we open it to public comments that were submitted online, do any council members have questions for the city manager or city attorney? Yeah, Mr. Zara?
Yes, actually, this is, I just wanted to, there were some comments that came out on the Brown Act. It's nothing to do with the, the eviction moratorium ordinance that we're discussing. But if the city attorney could just explain to the general public some of the provisions that the governor did to allow us to have this. I think that would be.
So. Yeah, I'd be happy to do so. So as you're aware, generally speaking, a city council is required to, or even person, or at least three people are required to be meeting person. But due to the COVID-19 virus, the governor issued determination that the Brown Act would not be violated for meeting in a manner potentially like we're doing right now. And because we're still allowing public comment, the governor did not expressly state what is absolutely required, but generally gives parameters of try to live within the spirit of the purpose of the Brown Act. And here, that's what we're doing. We're allowing the public to participate the best that we're able. The public certainly can email and comment, and we're trying to maximize participation to that that we're able.
Are there any questions before we open it up to public comment? Yeah, Mayor Protem?
All right. I have some suggestions for amending the ordinance, and the reason I'm going to mention them right now is because when people comment on this, then they can address it if they choose to. Number one, I've come into possession of, of an ordinance from the city of Palm Springs that identifies specifically those financial impacts that are related to the COVID-19 virus. And I think that should be included in our, in our ordinance itself. Specifically, I mean, this is an example of it. This is in the Palm Springs ordinance that was adopted March 19. Number one, being sick with COVID-19 or caring for a household or family member who is sick with COVID-19, that's number one. Number two, layoff, loss of hours for other income reduction resulting from business closure or other economic or employee impacts of COVID-19. Three, compliance with the recommendation of government health authority to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the state of emergency. Number four, extraordinary out-of-pocket medical expenses. Or five, childcare needs arising from school closures related to COVID-19. The reason I would advocate for including these financial impacts specifically in the ordinance is so that there would be no, there would be less controversy for what a financial impact was that the virus experienced. That's my number one thing, and all of that can be found in the Palm Springs ordinance. Number two, there is a provision in our ordinance. Well, let me start with a term. Our ordinance does not specify what the term is. Many of the other ordinances adopted in the county specified May 31st, 2020, as the term. And then that term to be extended either by city council action or by our city manager's decision. And I think that's a good idea, because I think there's a lot of landowners out there, people who are renting residences who don't like the lack of specificity for a term. So I think that we should, rather than just say that the term is going to be, as long as the Governor's Executive Order exists, we should rather give it a, a date certain and then leave an option to extend it within the ordinance. Then my second suggestion is, or third, is that in our ordinance, in our proposed ordinance, it states that the city manager or the city council may sus- will suspend the ordinance if the feds or the state adopt a similar legislation. It may be that if the state or the federal government adopts a legislation pertinent to tenant evictions, it may not include all the provisions that we want included in ours. So I would prefer that it says that the city manager or the city council may suspend the ordinance if the feds or the state adopts similar legislation. That would not be too difficult. Okay, I think that we need to add language. Our proposed ordinance states that the tenant must, within a time, within a certain amount of time, provide documentary evidence. They, first of all, they must write a letter to the landlord explaining why they need relief from eviction. And two, they must, they must provide supporting documents to prove that they actually do have a financial impact. And I think we need to add language that medical or financial information that is provided to a landlord must be held in confidence that it's confidential information and cannot be used for any other purpose other than to evaluate whether or not a financial impact exists. Scott, does that make sense to you?
That last one, that certainly, I have no objection to that. As far as your, your second item, as far as calling out, I'm not sure that it, there, there's no harm in, in providing the May 31st deadline, because that is when the Governor's Order expires by its own terms.
And I didn't know that. I didn't know that by reading our proposed ordinance.
Okay. So I think, I think as drafted legally, it does what you want it to do, because regardless of whether we say, oh, by the way, we have the right to extend it if we want to. Well, you always have that right, regardless of whether we put it in the ordinance or not. The Governor's Ordinance, the ruling does terminate May 31. We can call it out if we want to, but it's not required.
All right. And then the provision that says that the tenant must pay back the rent within 100, 120 days. You know, I think the council needs to have a discussion about this. If, if it's two months, if a tenant is behind two months, that may be doable in 120 days, the payback. But if this situation goes on for six or eight months, 120 days may be too tight a timeline. So I think that it would be useful to include in this that the tenant must pay back within 120 days, or as agreed otherwise, in an express writing between the landlord and the tenant. That gives the landlord and the tenant the option to work out some other arrangement. I mean, if a landlord just loves this tenant, they may want to give that tenant nine or 12 months to pay back whatever the arrearsage is. So I think with that, that would build some flexibility into our ordinance. And finally, the very last thing is, in our agenda letter, if you'll turn to page two, the very bottom paragraph of the agenda letter, not the ordinance itself, it says that if approved, the urgency ordinance would prohibit a landlord from initiating proceedings or otherwise taking steps to evict a tenant for non-payment of rent from any residential dwelling, including single-family, multifamily homes, mobile homes, or other structures lawfully used as a residential dwelling. Would that reading include people in motels? I mean, all of us on the council know that homeless people, there are circumstances in which they are given vouchers to stay in a motel. Would this ordinance cover that?
So potentially yes, so, and potentially no. So the answer is, it depends on whether they're a tenant. So the question is, in general, if you're staying in a motel or in a hotel, you are not a tenant, because you stay for a period of shorter than 30 days. But if you are an individual that stays long-term, and you have an agreement with the landlord, the property owner to allow you to stay for longer than that period, then generally speaking, then you would be a tenant. Now, most hotels are not supposed to have tenants, but, all the motels are not supposed to have tenants. But that's a violation of the municipal code, which is different than whether they are actually tenants. So if they're a tenant, then they're protected by this. If they're not, then the Governor's Order does not give us any additional grounds to offer them protection.
Okay. The language that's in the agenda letter at the bottom, page two, is an intention statement. And I would like to see that included in our ordinance. And then if a motel dweller is a tenant, then the person can make that argument. But I like the language of that, because it's very specific as to what constitutes a residential dwelling.
Well, in Fullerton, we allow our motels, I, I think you just said, Mr. Porter, that we have an ordinance that says you can't stay in a motel more than 30 days?
I don't, I, I know that that's the definition of tenancy in general. I believe our municipal code defines hotel as essentially saying that you're not a tenant, that you're not there for 30 days. But that's how our ordinance is set up. So there, there may be different kinds of hotels, and I can't speak about any particular hotel or any particular motel, but that's on my cursor review of the municipal code, that is, frankly, it's what I expected to see, because that's the norm, and it is what I saw.
Okay, and Mr. Domer, have any of the hotels been in contact with you about those people who rent rooms from them?
We have not had anybody contact us about renters in any motels. And generally, they wouldn't, because as Mr. Porter says, generally, the motels are not for tenancy. Though some of the very, very small ones, like on Euclid and Commonwealth, we do know have, but yeah, we have not been contacted by anybody on this issue. If this is an issue that comes up, or we need to look at other parts of our municipal code, I do believe that there is time to come back at the next meeting and, you know, address this issue. So I think it does require a more extensive review of the 30-day issue. Do believe that Buena Park may have looked at that also, so we could look at what they did.
Okay. All right. Anyhow, those are my suggestions for amendments, and I wanted to put that out there, so if the, if the public has any comments about that, they can weigh in as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zara?
Yeah, I think I, I would like to see, the hotel issue was one of the questions I had, and, and I'd like us to address it. But I do agree that it requires a little bit more details as far as what we have in our ordinance. So I'd like to see it come back at our next regular meeting, probably in April.
I think that's good.
Yeah. As far as the other comments and notes that Councilmember Mayor Protem Florrie said, I, I think that I like the confidentiality element there in, in, but it seems like everything else is already one way or another discussed and, and addressed in this particular ordinance. But I would like to see the confidentiality clause added.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments from council, then I'll ask our city clerk to read any public comments that came in on this topic.
She'll be right with you.
She'll be right with you.
Sorry, pushing buttons, getting this online again. Okay, we have forty-three comments submitted. I can read them all if you'd like, or I can summarize, um, whichever is preferable for you. Uh, they are all in favor. Um, some of them have other suggestions for amendments to the, uh, the, the ordinance.
Okay. In our advertisement of this, we said that if you got your comment in by five o'clock, they would be read aloud up to the three-minute time. Think you need to read it?
Right. Okay.
Um, Mayor Fitzgerald, may I make a suggestion? I have read all of the email comments that have come in and there obviously was a form letter that was and it was the same comment made over and over and over again. Can we combine those and merely state who it was that signed the letter? Because it's, there's no benefit in reading the same statement over and over and over again.
It, is that the nature of most of the comments, Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, then if you could read the letter once and then state all the names of the people who turned in, that'd be great.
Don't have them sorted by that, but I can tell you, shall I give you the name and summarize? Would that be?
No, I'd like you to read the letter, please, and then let us know who sent that letter in.
Okay. And if it's one that we've read already, looks like a form letter, I will let you know that it's the same thing. Um, so this is from David Galan- Galanders. My name is David Galanders. I'm the executive director of Pathways of Hope here in Fullerton for forty-five years. Pathways of Hope has been a community in trust in Fullerton, providing critical resources to our unhoused and poor community members, neighbors and friends. Since being declared a pandemic, COVID-19 has driven more people than ever to our access point located at 611 South Ford in search of both food and housing resources. Today, the unemployment claim shot up to 3.3 million. There is anticipation that next week may bring even more. With April 1st fast approaching, both residents of Fullerton and small businesses will be burdened and potentially unable to pay rent, driving more economic insecurity and deepening this crisis. The economic instability of households is the leading indicator of homelessness. We are mobilizing several channels to introduce more residential rental assistance to our community and an effort to stave off evictions. But it will not nearly be enough. During a typical self-service shift, we see thirty-five to forty households in search of food and housing assistance. In the last week, it has persistently been above one hundred households and has been as high as one hundred and thirty-five. Moratorium on evictions will keep households intact, stave off homelessness and allow our community to regroup as we work to figure out long-term solutions. As the economy stabilizes, the cost of mass eviction to the community is far greater than the grace of time and the eventual necessary investment of resources to keep people housed. Pathway of Hope thanks you for your consideration of this eviction moratorium and strongly supports its immediate enactment. From, uh, my name is John Ayala. I'm a resident of the Las Palmas neighborhood in North Fullerton. I'm a retired dean for Fullerton College and a member of the Board of Pathways of Hope. I believe, given the current national emergency and economic problems, an eviction moratorium for our residents will be beneficial for our now unemployed citizens. Please seriously consider this beneficial option. Uh, from Susan Hilger, uh, please include both commercial and residential in this agenda for tonight for rental. Also, this is a deferral of payment. And then what are the terms for how long and at what terms? It is important for the city to approve both commercial and residential so we can continue to be a thriving city in both sectors. And also so the rental citizens of our city have jobs to go back to, uh, by also included. But we need clear terms that this is rental deferral and clear terms as to what the repayment process is and those terms. Thank you. A very concerned, a very Fullerton resident and business owner and landlord. This one came over e-comment. It's from, I'm going to apologize now for all the names. I'm probably going to butcher, but Lindsay LaFaye. And it is important for residents to know that their leaders have their best interest at the forefront of their minds in these times. It is important to be leaders with vision and the spine to make the right decisions instead of kicking down the line. Please enact this moratorium and ensure that you always consider how your decisions can make our community safer. I hated explaining to my young children what a foreclosure was in two thousand and eight. Be in front of this today. This is from Samuel D'Angelo. Uh, current resident in Fullerton. His field of work is in the arts. I'm a dancer. I'm fortunate to have had consistent employment in my field of work for the past four years. But life as an artist is definitely a constant hustle. And while I have provided for myself due to the events that this pandemic has created, it has made sustaining income quite difficult. Being a teacher educator employed at CF Dance Academy in downtown Fullerton, my directors of the studio have been so gracious in doing everything they possibly can in order to maintain and give us as much work as possible. But this has not been the case as with my other jobs in dance. Much of our work is freelance-based. With this in mind, I am very nervous with the amount of work I am missing and being able to pay my rent for the potential upcoming months if this continues to progress and go on. Truly, I do not think that anyone knows how long we will be unable to work or work as infrequently in order to fund monthly payments of rent. If we had a date or a time when we can continue to go back to work, then it could be different. But as now, there is no clear timeframe of this entire situation. With that, the fear of others as well, myself facing possible eviction of our current residences becomes more and more real as the days go by. So many people are seeing this struggle due to the unforeseen set of circumstances this pandemic has created and the effect of that is that it has had on so many of us has been overwhelming to say the least. Thank you for your listening, for your time. This is, uh, Jessica Anderson, a Fullerton resident. I am an employee at CF Dance Command Academy in downtown Fullerton. I've worked in Fullerton for the past 12 years. Additionally, I've lived in Fullerton for the past seven. Due to the current pandemic, the studio has closed the doors until further recommendations from government health professionals. As a result, my hours of work have been greatly reduced. Therefore, my monthly income has decreased tremendously. I'm in complete support of the eviction moratorium as it allows me to stay in my home at this difficult time. And I urge you to consider passing this item so the residents are not displaced from their homes. Sorry, I need a water break. All right. My name is Darren Jones and I am submitting this written public comment in support of this emergency ordinance, both as a Fullerton resident, as a member of the Pathways of Hope Board of Directors. I am very proud of the council to consider this ordinance for a temporary eviction moratorium that includes reasonable criteria, manageable process and a repayment obligation that keeps landlords whole in the long run. The residential tenants protected in this ordinance, our, our friends, neighbors and fellow community members, protecting their housing during the height of this crisis is not only fair for them, but best for us as a city. The rapid economic recovery we hope for depends on all citizens of Fullerton being able to quickly dive back into their lives as they were before this crisis. Getting back to work, to school, to social gatherings, to volunteering and more. Fullertonians becoming unhoused will slow the economic recovery we are counting on, will create strain on our public and philanthropic resources and will leave us with residents that are deficit in the worst way possible. The commercial tenants protected in this ordinance are often the small businesses that define much of the character of our city. Fullerton has become home to so many businesses that contribute not only to the basics of an occupied building, taxes paid and employment for others, but they passionately give back in ways that define the idea of a civic business. So many of Fullerton's owners make our community more tightly knit, provide generous support of local philanth- philanthropy and have been there for us when we needed them. Our support of eviction relief ensures that not only can they aid in Fullerton's economic recovery by getting back to business and recalling employees back to work, but their civic contributions can continue when they are back to economic health. You have rightly considered the rights of property owners and requiring that rent repayment occur within a hundred and twenty days from the expiration of this term. Distressed properly, property owners will also create economic stress that could slow our recovery after COVID-19. None of this is easy for anyone, property owners included. However, finding new tenants, both residential and commercial, will be much more difficult given the economic crisis we are now in. Stability in tenant occupancy matched with eventual rent recovery as the ordinance reposes, proposes is the right approach. You have this resident's full support to pass this ordinance. To whom it may concern has been a Fullerton, I have been a Fullerton resident since two thousand and eight, have been a Fullerton business owner since two thousand and three. I'm in support of an eviction moratorium, protect residents from losing their homes as a result of the pandemic. Due to the pandemic, we've had to stop business operations at our facility, not only affecting the income of myself and my business partner, also a resident, but also some of our staff that are Fullerton residents. Our business is taking the role of sacred home very seriously in order to flatten the curve, but this has seriously hurt the livelihood for ourselves and our staff. We're also very concerned for the many families that we serve in Fullerton and we would hate to hear any of our families that had lost their home through the income loss from the pandemic. Having this moratorium in place will also help prevent an already stressed homeless situation in our city from becoming larger. Thank you for the time for reading this email. And this is from Leanna Marie Ferrucci. Hello there. Connor Morris, a Fullerton mentor of three years, believes we should temporarily suspend evictions for the time being as the economic climate, climate reacts to subsidies from the COVID-19 crisis. It is our duty to do whatever we can to prevent the spread of this disease and forcing citizens to relocate via eviction during this dangerous time would negatively affect those efforts. Faith Ferrucci Morris says she rents a home in the city of Fullerton and strongly believes we should follow the example of other local cities and suspend eviction for those who cannot afford to pay their rent in this unprecedented time. My husband and I are lucky in that we still have work at the moment, can't afford to pay rent, but is unclear how long those social distancing, distancing preventative measures will remain in place and we may not continue to be fortunate. There are many residents in this city, including my own immediate family, who have had drastic changes to their work and income due to this pandemic. Thank you for your time and consideration. Uh, this looks like it's from Carolyn Cole or Caring Cole. As I appreciate the consideration for a moratorium on eviction, I'm asking for consideration also for some sort of clear, clear rent relief or rent forgiveness as well. I live in a small apartment complex where many, if not all, of the tenants are unable to work. Several restaurant, our restaurant workers that depend on tips, one of which is a single mother, two, and supporting her eighty-four-year-old mother. Their rent is being increased on April 1st. Hers is being increased by $100. Saying no evictions may help us keep the roof over our head for a few months, but it doesn't really help if and when this is all over. The $1,800 a month we each pay will keep compounding. These people may completely lose their jobs. They haven't already, splitting any amount owed from this crisis to the back end to the future will be impossible for those people. Many of us have lived here for five to fifteen years. I don't know the numbers, but I know there are thousands of apartment dwellers that are all feeling the same way. I'm sure we will all pay what we can. But there are some tenants that will be forced out when this is over because there's no way they will have thousands of dollars to pay. What will we do? We all love Fullerton. We love our homes. We need Fullerton to love us back. Please consider us. This is from Laura Cole. For a moratorium on evictions to properly work during this crisis without bankrupting those out of work, we will need to institute a policy that includes no penalties and no paybacks. We're going to get trapped in a cycle of being indebted indefinitely to our landlords and lenders. We need a complete rent and mortgage freeze immediately. How is a person supposed to come up with a lump sum of three months' rent after the hundred and day, hundred and twenty-day period after the ordinance comes to a close? Some of us maybe be able to go back to work, but many of us were laid off. Expecting people to come up with five or $6,000 after not working for three months is outlandish. We deserve better production than this. This is a e-comment from Tom Coe. I'm a resident of Fullerton. I also work in Fullerton and attend church in Fullerton. I support the moratorium of eviction. Many residents of Fullerton are not going to get into work. This is not by choice. And to subject, subject everyone to eviction at this time due to causes entirely out, out of their own, let alone everyone else's control is both unconscionable and is passionate. As those who serve the residents of Fullerton, I implore you to vote yes in favor of an eviction moratorium. Another e-comment from Adam Oberton. Greetings. We urge the city council, the he govern- Governor Newsom's executive order that authorizes local governments to halt evictions for renters and homeowners slows foreclosures and protects against utility shut-offs for Californians affected by COVID-19, acting now as a moral imperative in order to protect Fullerton residents, businesses and the workers they employ. Please pass this moratorium. Thank you. Patty Yu, uh, thank you for your swift response and agendizing the urgency ordinance. She appreciates the hard work that the city manager and city attorney have done to bring forth this urgency ordinance and asks that you unanimously vote in favor of the ordinance to protect Fullerton families and save lives. Um, Lucy, no. Um, I had the same email as a previous speaker, so I won't read that one again. This is Ian Parker. The Labor Department said this morning that almost 3.3 millions filed for unemployment last week. Hundreds of thousands of them live in California. Many more have had their pay or hours cut, even if they technically retain their jobs in this atmosphere. We can't allow people to be thrown out on the street through no fault of their own. Urge you to follow the example of many other cities throughout California and announce a temporary eviction moratorium in Fullerton. I understand the concerns of landlords, but in this challenging time, we need to affirm that the health and safety of our residents is more important than financial concerns. This is Jessie Downs, Director of the Center for Helping Neighborhoods. On behalf of the staff at CSUF Center for Helping Neighborhoods and hundreds of vulnerable families within Fullerton, I you support the eviction moratorium to protect residents from losing their homes as a result of the pandemic. As you know, our center provides education and health services and programs to hundreds of the most vulnerable families in Fullerton to help them to be resilient and financially independent. They've been conducting phone calls with residents to determine their lead, their needs, and the overwhelming concern has been financial difficulties from losing their jobs. Unfortunately, must, most are unable to pay rent or mortgage until they are able to work again, although some qualify for unemployment, many do not. On a final note, they want to emphasize that the vulnerable families that they serve are trying to better themselves and their families. I'd hate to see the them end up homeless for the greater good of all. Please support the eviction moratorium. Elizabeth Hamburg Hansburg urges the city council to put in place a moratorium on evictions in Fullerton for renters who have been impacted by COVID-19 through illness or loss of income due to social distancing. Homeowners have been given a full year reprieve from making their mortgage payments. Renters do not have the same protection. She urges you to extend some stability to Fullerton residents who are renters. Will not only help individual renters and their families, it'll also help delay the spread of virus. Um, she lists who the vulnerable populations are, um, and notice that the they will fall into homelessness at a time when the government is definitely trying to convince people to stay home. Our city, our county and the entire state is struggling with the rising rate of homelessness even before the outbreak. Having an eviction on one's record makes it nearly impossible to find a new rental home. So this will protect renters during this time of uncertainty. And lastly, without protection, renters who work, any of the few remaining businesses that are open are more likely to show up for work, you know, if they are ill, and this will risk even further spreading of the virus. And for those reasons, she urged you to place a temporary moratorium on evictions through May 31st, 2020, with an option to extend um, in response to the pandemic and economic circumstances. And the policy follows the cities of Santa Ana, Anaheim and Costa Mesa. Uh, Gail Bloom, thank you for addressing the issues regarding rent utilities during the COVID-19 epidemic. I urge city council to take the following actions until the crisis has been abated. Halt all eviction notices. Implement a moratorium of rent increases, continue city services, utilities and make payment arrangements with delinquent accounts without late fees. This is an e-comment from Gabriel Sudario. As an ER doctor, I'm deeply concerned about the COVID pandemic beyond the health consequences. I am deeply concerned for those suffering financially from this crisis. Families should not have to choose between food or rent, leaving small children at home alone to find work. Evictions would place vulnerable families at a higher risk of adverse health outcomes. Strongly urge you to protect the vulnerable and adopt the recommendation of the state of California. Raul Wadwa, um, thank you for your swift response and agendizing the urgency ordinance for this special meeting. He appreciates the hard work that city manager and a city attorney of Porter have. This looks like one we've read already, um, related to the the, uh, the moratorium and asks that you unanimously vote in favor to protect Fullerton family and save lives. Howard Haberman. Uh, the issues facing all of us during these unprecedented times are certainly complicated and trying. Am an active registered voter, has been a Fullerton resident for almost fifty years, fortunate enough to own two rental properties in the city. Uh, he was laid off from paycheck job last week and still feels obligated and committed to make every mortgage payment. Please do not create an environment that motivates tenants to have any less obligation to pay their rent than I do. The mortgage, I'm a reasonable business person and will deal with my clients and tenants on a case-by-case basis. Establishing a moratorium on evictions would be a knee-jerk reaction that is short-sighted and overreaching. What is your plan or safety net for Fullerton residents who are also mom and pop residential owners like my wife and I? Please realize that this is a much larger issue than a city, county or state should take on. This is a federal matter, so we should not take ourselves this seriously. Thank you for your time. Let's see. This is Rosa Maria Gomez Amaro. I strongly support that the city council adopt the ordinance, uh, for the moratorium on evictions and thank you for your careful consideration of this seriously needed action in support of Fullerton residents. This is an e-comment from Jason Phillips. Hi, council, it's Jason Phillips. I lead a collaborative churches Fullerton Act. Thank you for bringing this up to a meeting. Please have a temporary moratorium on evicting tenants during this crisis. I just saw Anaheim approve something similar. I ask you to follow our neighbors. This is a unique moment in our lives that calling us to be flexible in our actions and even philosophies. Ask you to protect our residents. Even if you are philosophically opposed to this, thank you. This one is a non-agenda comment. I don't skip that one for now. That's the same speaker. Sandy Illuster here. These are hard times and many are already feeling the news. Let's help people. Let's tell people are going to need time to recover. Let's allow them that time. Thank you. Uh, from Bernice. Galisa, I'm sorry if I'm not quite pronouncing that name right. Please help the people that are renting and aren't able to pay for rent at the moment. Thank you. Jose Tuna de Castaneda, thank you for your swift response and agendizing the urgency ordinance for the special meeting. I'm deeply appreciative to the hard work from the city manager and city attorney Porter. Again, this is one of the form letters that went through and ask you all to vote. Unanimously in favor of the item to protect Fullerton families. Uh, there is one with just a subject line of votes, so it doesn't have anything in the message of the body. Taca Picha Reeves, again, I'm sorry about the name. Um, I don't have a question, just a comment. I received a letter from my property management company. I'm a good tenant of 15 years that stated basically that they heard the governor's promise of no evictions, but they still had a right to evict me and launched a new three day pay or quit policy enabling them to proceed with eviction filings regardless of hardships due to COVID. I doubt this was the only company that sent out letters like this. So now along with the fear of losing my job, fear of getting sick. Now there's a fear of losing my home thanks to unchecked predatory business practices. Now what? And that looks like it for that folder. Zuri Ramos has submitted a letter on behalf of the Kennedy Commission, which is going to be probably longer than the three minute limit. Let me see if I can summarize quickly. Um, this Kennedy Commission is a broad based coalitions of residents of community organizations that advocates production of homes for affordable families earning less than $20,000 annually in Orange County. And they worry that any loss of wages related to the outbreak of COVID-19 will only further imperil the, with homelessness at our most out at risk. A homebound school age child. Uh, under section one G were payment of rent required. They would like to extend that from 120 to 180 days. They also urge that the ordinance include moratorium and rent increases until the crisis has been abated. Continue city services and utilities, including water and electricity and defer fees without interest until the crisis abates. And to agree to make payment arrangement without late fees once things stabilize. And impose a moratorium on parking fees and late payment penalties. For past parking violations for 60 days until the crisis abated. And with that, they urge passage of the ordinance. David Duran, thank you so much for moving forward and addressing this need. He's an Anaheim resident, but has been a longtime volunteer in Fullerton schools and has family and friends living in Fullerton and is also an active advocate in providing services to unhoused people in Orange County. They asked, he asked you also include in the moratorium language. That includes a clear process for residents to use should landlords not respect or know of the moratorium. The stress and burden of navigating these times is tough enough. Uh, he understands that small businesses are included in the proposal. He hopes you do plan to include nonprofits in that group as well. Include a freeze on any shut offs of utilities or city services for any unpaid bills with no late fees assessed. Spell that process for those needing that support. The safe parking program. Is a good model in these times. Street parking is even better issue. Um, and they understand we're loosening enforcement, which will help all. Please also waive any parking fees that have occurred during this time. You notice you got a call today that a landlord has set a notice of rent increase to a single tenant of a tenant of a single family home. He's certain this will happen more. Please include a moratorium on any all rent increases during this time. Pat Davis sent the same letter as a previous speaker with requesting those changes to the ordinance. Lionel Talavara submitted something on behalf of Sharon Ellis, president of Habitat for Community, Habitat for Humanity, excuse me. And this is a global pandemic. We know housing is vital to a community's health and wellbeing and habitat humanity of Orange County. We have seen the difference. Stable housing makes in the lives of family. I hope the members of city council adopt the recommendation of the state of California to have a moratorium on evictions for renters and homeowners who cannot pay their rent or mortgage. While we're in a state of emergency now more than ever, having a stable place to call home is important. This is Susan Hilger. This needs to be, there needs, this needs to do more than ban evictions. This needs to also include terms of repayment. We need to follow Mayor Eric Garcetti. Garcetti who laid out a clear 90. Deferral is both commercial and residential rent repayments and clear terms. That residents will have six months after the 90 days to pay back the deferred payments. If we are really going to get through this crisis, we need more than a ban on rent eviction. It would be in Fullerton's best interest to lay out not only the ban on evictions, but also deferred payments, your timeframe for tenants to pay back the landlord. Uh, Mike Rodriguez, uh, resident of Fullerton, thanks you for calling this meeting. Ask that you add these protections to the ordinance, a moratorium on rent increases until the crisis is abated. And please allow city services and utilities to continue without and defer fees without interest until the crisis is debated. Mandy Yates asked you to please consider an eviction moratorium to protect some of our city's most vulnerable citizens from losing their homes. Thank you for your powerful example of compassionate leadership. Uh, an e-comment submitted by Mike Rodriguez. My name is Mike, Mike Rodriguez. I'm a resident of Fullerton. Thank you for calling this meeting tonight. Please include the following in the ordinance. A moratorium on rent increases until a crisis has abated and again, city services and utilities to continue. Just as a previous speaker or previous commenter. Uh, Lionel Talvera submitted, um, support for on behalf of the following people, uh, the Woodcrest Association, Kareem O. Angeles R, they'll say M, Yolanda R, it might be Yolanda as a typo, but Yolanda R and Patricia M, M Blanca H. She noted that they are all in support of this. And I believe I have one comment of speaker talking about the Brown Act in relation to e-commerce. And one more from Amy Abisher, a growing number of individuals and families are at risk of becoming homeless during this pandemic. It is incumbent in Palm Fullerton to take steps to protect the health and welfare of our residents. Especially those who are the most vulnerable. We need an eviction moratorium that protects and supports tenants rather than adds more anxiety during this difficult time. The written notification components of the moratorium are unjust and highly burdensome. Respectfully, Amy. And then there should be. Let me find there are six more here that got translated that aren't in this pile. Um, this is from Alma Chavez. Hello. Good morning, city manager. Ask for your help to pass the eviction moratorium. Fullerton residents are concerned about what is being done with the Corona 19. I Alma Chavez, represent Okoco and community leader and thank you and have a wonderful day. These were all translated from Spanish. So they probably aren't exact, but they are close enough to get the point that they are in support of the moratorium. Yes, to a temporary moratorium upon eviction of tenants. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to say that was from, uh, Irma Linda Rodriguez. This is from Jose Figueroa. Good afternoon. I'm contacting you here carefully to vote yes to avoid evictions in Fullerton since two weeks ago I have lost my, lost two jobs. Um, from one day to the next, and without being able to leave home, only to go to the store without work, my family and I will not be able to have a roof, food or what is necessary. This is from, oh, this is the one that just said vote. That was from Olga Hernandez. Uh, this is from Veronica Gomez. I'm in favor of a temporary moratorium on tenant evictions. Let us consider desperate situation. These families who have done nothing wrong. You could be in their place without intent to cause it. You must be understanding this supportive. Please God bless you for your work. And there is one more. Uh, there's one more from Veronica Moran. Um, good morning. I just came this morning. Good morning, members of the council. I thank you for your warmth. Um, asking you to vote to suspend evictions in Fullerton because many people have lost their job overnight without notice because of the pandemic and the situation is worse for disadvantaged communities such as older people, people with different abilities, low resources and other. Um, supporting the motion will help our families to be protected, safe and emotionally stable since they will not need to be afraid of being homeless and on the street. Another advantage is to avoid contagions due to the urgent need to attain money to cover basic needs. And I believe that is all of the comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yep. Thanks very much, uh, Ms. Williams. Really appreciate it. Go ahead and take a drink of water.
Or two, yes.
Okay. I'll bring it back to council. Um, uh, Mr. Zara, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. Um, I I mean, I think that we all know that, uh, a lot of people are struggling right now and I, I do want to thank again everybody for working hard on this and I want to thank also our landlord community for, uh, for also being supportive. I know the, uh, the California Apartment Association and other, uh, organizations that support, that advocate for landlords also have come out in support of, uh, measures like this. So, uh, you know, again, it shows, uh, unity at a time when we all need to come together. And, uh, and I'm really proud of our community in doing so. Um, I do have, uh, there was some, some comments about uh, relief. Um, I think that the initial, this initial measure is to really keep people in their homes. Uh, make sure people, uh, have a roof over their heads. Uh, and then I know that federally and, uh, on the state level, there are relief measures already being uh, discussed and, and approved as we speak. Uh, and I hope that, and I know that we are tracking all of these. Uh, what I'd like to see is, uh, is put if for us as a city to put together uh, a resource list on our websites, website. So, so people can have one spot to come in and look at what is available now and what, and as, and we can update it as things, uh, improve and as relief starts coming in. Um, and, uh, as far as I, I think that, um, there's a question also on clarity on some of these, um, these ordinances sometimes can be unclear. And I think it would be great to have a, uh, a FAQ or fact sheet that we can explain uh, people's rights under this ordinance, um, as well. I think that, um, I would like also to ask, uh, to explore. I know I had a question today from, uh, one of a landlord. She's a, uh, she, she has a couple of units, I think, or two or three units. Uh, so there are some small landlords, uh, who, uh, will be impacted. They have to pay their, uh, mortgage and their water bill and so on. And, and while we don't have really much ability to, uh, incapacity as a city, we don't have authority over mortgages and so on, but I know federally in the state they're dealing with that. But we do, I'm wondering if, uh, there's a possibility of looking into, uh, relieving any landlord from, uh, water, uh, penalties or late fees if, uh, it comes to that as well. Uh, and then lastly, I like the idea of the, uh, the, the non, adding the nonprofits, although I think they technically would qualify as, as a small business. Uh, but it would be great to add that if possible to the ordinance in addition to the confidential clause that, uh, Mayor Francis Laurie, uh, did, uh, mentioned earlier. Uh, and with that, I think I'm, I'm very supportive of this ordinance. Uh, I know a lot of people are anxious and, and this at least calms people down and, and makes, puts assurance that no one will lose their home, um, in this time.
Is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, thanks. Okay. And I would just say a couple of things. Um, I read that, um, many major banks today, um, gave a 90 day deferral of mortgage payments. Um, our Edison, SoCal Gas, our water department are all, uh, you know, have ceased shut offs, uh, during this time. Um, and so maybe Mr. Domer, um, in a little bit, you can, uh, talk a little bit more about that. Um, uh, but I loved what you said too about, uh, making sure that the resources on our, are on our website and that we have an FAQ. And yes, as you said, we don't have the authority to forgive rent. That is not in our authority to be able to do. Um, but certainly because of the governor's executive order to do this deferral. Um, and then with that, I had asked Mr. Silva, um, would you like to second the motion and do you have comments?
Uh, I have a couple of comments and, uh, adjustments to what Mayor Potash Foley requested. Uh, on the, uh, number one, on the amount of time to pay it back. Uh, if it's four months, if we look at a two month, this ordinance lasts two months. And then we take the simple example of a thousand dollars a month. So in two months, this typical renter will owe. If it's a 120 day payback, uh, his first payment after that would be a thousand 500. We'll have to pay the monthly rent that, well, let's say for June, plus start paying the, the previous two months. So that's an increase of about 50% in rent. If we, uh, keep it at, at a, at a 120 day payback. And, uh, they have to start paying, you know, let's say at the end of June. I, I like to see our, uh, our, our time limit go to six months at a minimum. That way, if after two months, taking the same thousand dollar a month rent. After two months and we call it off in June, the, the increase is only 33%. So I, I, I like to see that, uh, that, that, uh, what was it on our letter, on our letter G, uh, go from 120 days to 180 days. And then on the subject of modification, uh, I'd like to see if we could get a form letter or form memo that the residents can fill out and they need to, uh, and submit to the landlord. Uh, we got a lot of phone calls from residents who didn't have email access and so forth. So for them to ride and, and track down the landlord, that might be challenging. So I'd like to see if we can do a, a form document to, 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 uh, to say that, uh, they're, they're unable to pay the rent. And, uh, that that's their notice and maybe even another form document. That will document them being laid off from the employer. That also could be cumbersome for someone who is uh, all of a sudden has to get back out there and, uh, and find work or, or deal with expenses. So if we could do some sort of form letter, that'd be great.
So Mr. Silva, may I just ask for clarification? So if we created a form letter that listed all of the reasons for needing rent deferral so that they could just check the box and then turn that into their landlord? Is that what you're asking for?
That, that would help some of them. I really do. And then at the same, uh, token, uh, if they had to then prove to, to their landlord, uh, in essence, get a note from the employer. Something their employer could sign and say, yeah, uh, people are being laid off, hours, whatever it is, just to facilitate that process. Uh, if we could do that, I'm not, uh, you know, kind of a simple form where they can fill in their name and I can check off.
Okay. So if, uh, would you second the motion if council member Zara agreed to your changes?
I would second the motion if you agreed to 180 days and to look at those two, uh, form, uh, two, uh, form documents or template documents.
Mr. Zara, will you accept those amendments?
The question I have on the, um, the, is this, uh, is this within our, uh, purview as far as, uh, in an open, in court, you know, in uh, as far as the governor's order?
Yes, some cities have passed ordinances that give up to six months. Some have done 120 days. It's really up to us and I was gonna as well.
And I was gonna as well suggest six months.
Yeah, and I would be happy to amend my motion to include those changes.
Okay, so thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded then. Mr. Whitaker? I'm sorry, Mr. Whitaker, we can't hear you. I'm sorry, we still can't.
Real quick, does the motion include Mayor Fortem's suggestions as well?
I believe the confidentiality agreement and the list of qualified items, correct?
Mayor, I believe that the city attorney has been working on a draft.
So we're taking into her first suggestion. She had four. Are we doing all four or just one, three and four?
No, I, I think, I think what I, what I understood, I mean, I like the confidentiality depth for sure. What I understood as far as the date, I'd like to keep it the way it is now. And the, because it seems the same whether May 31st or as it is now, it is the same. Corresponds to what the governor, the governor's orders are. As far as specifying the causes, I think these are, I don't know if that needs to be included in there because I think we.
Okay, let's get it, let's get an answer from the city attorney. Hold on a second.
So I have drafted a number of revisions which are consistent with Councilmember Florrie's earlier recommendation. We can talk about those if you want. But as far as this specific question, we, the safest course is to not include the language. But that is certainly by no means a problem. I don't think it would be a problem to include what Councilmember Florrie had indicated. Reason being is those are, I think, consistent with the purposes of the governor's order. And the governor's order did say including but not limited to blah, blah, blah. So we can add things that we believe are consistent with that. If we, because what a court will do is if we don't include that, then a court will make its own determination of what the governor's order means. Here, we're sort of forcing the hand of the court to do what we think it means. The court could potentially say, actually, this is inconsistent with the governor's rules, therefore it's not allowed. I think it is consistent with the governor's rules. So if we want to add language, that would be permissible. And I've drafted language that I think is consistent with Councilmember Florrie's recommendation.
As long as it's not limiting us, because I mean, I don't, because we don't know what circumstances there are that people may be going through. So if we are specifying, then we are limiting people's abilities in some, in certain cases.
So, as. Councilmember Mayor Fortem Florrie, excuse me, Mr. Porter. Mayor Fortem Florrie, you're on mute. There you go.
Thank you. What is very stilted about this conversation is there's not, we can't do a lot of back and forth. And Ahmad, the reason I wanted a description of, of what the financial impacts were is because there might be a dispute between a landlord and a tenant about a tenant who stayed home to take care of a family member. And I like Scott's suggestion that financial impact would include a description of these various things, but not be limited to that. Because then that gives some guidance to the landlord and the tenant. I loved Jesus's suggestion about a form letter. Because remember, the form letter, if boxes are checked off and it, it becomes an affidavit to be signed under penalty of perjury, documents have to accompany that affidavit. And I think that would be a big service to our tenants to have that form letter. I love that idea.
I will include, as long as it's not limited to things, then I would happily include that.
Yes, and then as far as the term goes, if what the, what the ordinance, the proposed ordinance currently says is this section remains in effect until the expiration of the governor's executive order, which is currently May 31st, 2020, just as a point of reference. And any, any extensions thereof, that would resolve that issue. It's just, I think, the more information you put in the ordinance, the more clarification there is. And that gives some comfort to the landlords. I do support Jesus's suggestion that the 180 days. But I would like added to that, that unless that is, unless there's a letter of agreement between the landlord and the tenant, otherwise, because landlord and.
Four more, Dan, four longer?
Or, or shorter, either one.
Well, I think, I believe it says up to, so they're welcome to.
They're, they're welcome to do.
Is that right, Mr. Porter? Can you explain that?
So I think language that would solve this would be so that it would stay in no event later than 180 days rather than 120. In no event later than 180 days from the expiration of the term, unless otherwise agreed by the parties in writing. The parties can agree, yes, or.
I love it, yes. I would totally support this with that addition, yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Whitaker, should we try it again? How's that, try it?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, you know, I wanted to comment on those who contacted the council on this through the many emails and calls and the letters which Ms. Williams just read. And there's no question that there is a large amount of concern about the economic challenges that we're looking at. And through no fault of their own, many of these residents are going to be facing some really tough choices coming up. I have a question though. In many cases, we run the risks of merely shifting the burden to others, which exacerbate their challenges and their problems. If at the end of this proposed moratorium, if the economy is still in a tailspin, will this council extend perhaps indefinitely these restrictions? What we're doing is shifting. Do we put the burden on landowners, landlords, rental property owners, those who depend upon steady cash flow to stay afloat? We're talking about a very large commitment of funds. And in this, in this steadily changing situation that we're looking at with so many people's employment being interrupted. You know, again, through no fault of their own, many of the people who have provided these rental properties and who are on the hook for those, for us to intervene in a, in a strong way where normally the private transaction of landlord and tenant is a respected one. I have concerns about that because, you know, those people, and I did, there were a few who spoke about, you know, their concerns about the city wading into this. And I suspect there are many others who are, you know, concerned about looking as though they're not compassionate to even speak up about their concern about being able to maintain their liquidity through this crisis.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I, I support this measure. I think this is a catastrophe for the residents and the businesses in this town. And we've been authorized to give them relief. And again, as I said, we are not forgiving rent. This is a deferral with six months, six months after it to pay back what's owed. And mortgage companies as well are giving deferrals right now on mortgages. And so I, I support this. We need to help people where they are right now and not make this a bigger catastrophe than it already is. Are there any other further comments before we take a vote? Ms. Florrie, you're muted. Everyone unmute so we can take a vote, please. We're gonna take a roll call vote. Ms. Florrie, do you have more comments?
Only this. I want to make sure that we've included the amendments that we've been talking about. So I suppose this video is a record of all of that. But I think we have consensus now.
Do you think Mr. Porter wants to talk about the amendments? Head?
So if I can summarize, I think the following are the amendments we've discussed. I've drafted some language. If anybody has any issues with the following language, please let me know. I'll assume that this is a consensus motion that we're agreeable to this. So first of all, to resolve the issue about hotel and motels, making sure that it's clear that this applies, I would propose to add the following whereas clause. It would state, whereas, this would be the, it would be a new whereas, it would be the second to last whereas. Whereas this ordinance applies to all commercial and residential tenancies, regardless of whether the Fullerton Municipal Code prohibits or allows the property to be used for tenancy. E.G. if a hotel or motel allows tenancy, this ordinance would apply even if the municipal code prohibits the hotel or motel from allowing tenancy. All right, that's the first revision. On the second revision was not clear to, I think Councilmember Florrie, I wasn't sure on the term, what we wanted to do there, if there was consensus on this. If we want to add the specific date, we could revise it as follows.
So I think, Mr. Porter, we all said that it's fine the way that it's written, that it's implied.
Okay.
No, my suggestion was that we just for sake of clarification, say that the governor's order terminates on thus such a date, which is May 31st. Just insert that. Because it includes any.
Okay, I, I understand, Mr. Zara, is that all right with you?
That, that is fine, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Silva?
So to, yes, that's fine. Okay, so to accomplish that, the sentence would be revised, the first sentence would be revised to provide as follows. The section one remains in effect until the expiration of the governor's executive order in 28-20, in parentheses, the quote, order on May 31st, 2020, unless the term of the order is revised, in which case this section one will expire on the order's revised termination date. And then it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then of course, we already have the addition that I recommended at the very beginning of this, that we found the sentence, this ordinance applies only to what do on or after the issuance of the executive order in 28-20 on March 4th, 2020. The next revision would be the Palm Springs revision relating to eviction. So it would, it would add the following. After B, so it currently says the basis for eviction is all, is including but not limited to. A is still there, it's still a substantial decrease in household income. B is substantial decrease in business income. And then the new additions would be C and D. And they would state, C, substantial decrease in household or business income caused by compliance with a recommendation from a federal, Californian or Orange County Health Authority to stay home, self-quarantine or avoid, or to avoid, my, to avoid congregating with others.
Oh, you know, D said we should do that.
Are we okay with that?
Well, also, did you include being, being sick with COVID-19 or caring for a household or family member who is sick?
Executive order. So.
Layoff, loss of hours, or rather, number three, quarantine or avoid congregating with others during a need of emergency for extraordinary out-of-pocket medical expenses or childcare needs arising from school closures related to COVID-19.
So my proposed B would, so I don't want to add the medical expenses because we already have that. And the language that we have is straight out of the governor's order. So E already says substantial out-of-pocket medical expenses. So we don't need to add that.
Okay.
My proposed B would be a substantial decrease in the household or business income due to childcare need arising from school closures related to COVID-19.
How about the being sick with COVID-19 or caring for a family member with it?
It did not include that, and let's include that right now.
Okay.
That would be E with your language. And then F would be the substantial out-of-pocket medical expenses.
Yes, okay.
All right.
We're accommodating this. I mean, this is really a discussion, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine.
The last, got two more revisions. We would make G. So it currently, we would re-letter H. So we would add a confidentiality provision immediately after definition of in writing. Section G with a confidentiality. If a tenant provides a landlord evidence of any COVID-19-related financial impacts, the landlord shall keep such evidence in strict confidence.
Thank you.
And then the, and then within H, we've already talked about this one, the revision to be 180 days rather than 120. It's a 180 days from the expiration of the term, unless otherwise agreed by the parties in writing. And that is it for my revision.
Yay.
Mayor, the request for those form letters, if the resident is muted, is that just automatic? Or do we need to include it in there?
We don't need that in the ordinance.
Okay.
It doesn't need to be in the ordinance, but I think staff understands the direction.
All right, thank you.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and then with that, we'll go ahead. Are there any other comments before we take a vote? Then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Ms. Williams, would you administer that, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitaker?
No.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Fortem Florrie?
Yes.
And Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
I have four votes in favor and one against by Councilmember Whitaker.
Okay, that passes four to one. And this is an urgency ordinance, so it'll go into effect immediately. With that bit of business done, I would ask Ms. Williams to read any other public comments on non-agenda items.
I have one communication on a non-agenda item from Alyssa Lawrence. She's very concerned about the continued usage of parks and trails within the city. Posting guidelines on social media outlets does not mean people can follow them. People continue to congregate at parks, playing contact sports like baseball or flood the trails to the point where you cannot pass safely six feet around others. Laguna Lake Trail was so crowded last weekend that cars lined the streets in the neighborhood the entire weekend, reaching all the way to Euclid. We couldn't safely leave our home to go on a walk in our own neighborhood because of this. This is our community and you need to protect us from people who continue to behave unsafely regardless of guidelines from the CDC, governor and city. Keep in mind, the issue isn't just our citizens, but people flocking into our communities to partake in our resources over the weekend. Try actually driving by these locations and witness what is happening before you double down on leaving facilities open. Do something. And she also noted that she sent two emails to the city and hadn't heard, expressing her concerns, hadn't heard responses at the time. I believe Park and Recreation, my, is my comment now, had responded to her. And she expects more from the city and expects the city to address concerns and expects the city to protect her citizens, the citizens. And that is the only comment.
Thanks very much for that. And we are doing all we can to keep our parks and trails open so people can get exercise and fresh air and ensure proper social distancing. And we ask the public to do their part in that as well. With that, are there any other comments from council members before we adjourn? Ms. Florrie, you need to unmute before you talk, my dear. There you go.
I don't think I have control over that. Anyway, I want to respond to that comment because I was on the trail at 10 o'clock in the morning around Laguna Lake. I parked on Morelia and went down the Wanita Cook Trail and all around Laguna Lake. And I, my impression was that people were very respectful, respectful of the six-foot distance. Yes, there were a lot of people out and they were using the trail. But Laguna Lake is not an entity that is specific to that neighborhood. And I think that our citizens have to have outlets, places to walk their dogs, et cetera. And there were a couple of occasions when people would come within three feet of me, but other than. would come within three feet of me, but other than that, I hold my breath and walk forward. I did not see a problem. And I think it's more important that we have these outlets for our citizens to avail themselves of.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, I, this is not as free-flowing a conversation as we usually have, but I'm proud of us that we were able to get through this. And I wish you all health and peace. And we'll be back for our regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday, I believe. Thanks so much. The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Ahmad Falyar, for bringing this up earlier.
If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available.